All right, welcome Pearland City Hall for a special recognition service. I'd like to bring forward Mayor Emeritus Tom Reed. Come on. Just cut out, there we go. And as he's walking down, gentleman obviously needs no introduction. Those that live in Pearland and have been in Pearland for any number of years know the special contributions that Mayor Reed has given, tireless hours, years, decades to our city. And the residents of our city, the citizens that are living here today, and those that came before us can only say thank you for the special time that you've spent not only in this building, but even in the previous city hall. So not only as a council member, but also as mayor. And let me just read this a little bit so people will get the sense. Here we go. "Special recognition for the city of Pearland, whereas the here and after named as unselfishly," and that's a key phrase, "unselfishly contributed time, talents, and energies to serve the people of Pearland. And whereas such contribution has become a part of the foundation upon which the city stands," and his footprints and handprints are everywhere. "And whereas the members of city council, city of Pearland, Texas, Brazoria, Harris, and Fort Bend Counties, state of Texas, deem it fitting and proper to recognize the service and contribution of Tom Reed." He was a council member from 1973 to 1977, and he served as mayor from 1978 through 1990, and then most recently 1995 through 2020. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Pearland, Texas hereby express their heartfelt appreciation to Tom Reed for his unselfish contributions and service to the city of Pearland and its citizens, presented by the city council on this 25th day, 2021." We'll set this. Yep, and that is a formal recognition there as well as your portrait hung for many years here in City Hall. Want to make sure that you have that to keep as well. Yeah, still young at heart, how's that? And with that, I'd like to offer the mayor the opportunity to say a few words, not only to those who are present, but also, oh, let's... You want to do the picture now or after he speaks? Okay, all right.
Okay, this is an opportunity for me to change another phase of my life. I've had quite a few of those and don't look forward necessarily to the losing the contacts with all of my former council members. But you know, one of the things I think is very important that we have a brand new mayor, we have a brand new council member. We've got another council member, but he's an old one who's been hanging around quite a while. But I think as you look at the opportunities that you have as a council member, new to the... Of course, Kevin is not new to the public life as this because he was a council member and mayor pro tem back in about 2019, I believe, 2015 timeframe. But I think that the members that are coming on board today are very fortunate because we have the good fortune to have one of the best city councils in the country. And there's an awful lot of reason why Pearland is the city it is because of the quality of the councils that we've had over the years. I know several years ago, Houston Chronicle, but just below the fold, had an article about the fact that there are several, there are three areas of the suburban development around Houston that are destined to be something very special. And they said that what they have decided to do was call them the lands, Pearland, Woodlands, and Sugar Land. That was back in 2015. Actually, I used that chart in my State of the City, January of 26, January 16. But you know, I have enjoyed the opportunity to be able to serve Pearland in this area. I'm, of course, plan to keep busy, continuing my support to the city as either a, what you might call, an ambassador to the city as mayor emeritus. And I plan to make sure that I'm not going to be one of these guys that retires and goes out and plays checkers and dominoes with the guys in the morning. I build things. And Pearland happens to be one of those. And we're very fortunate that the progress we've made recently with our quality city council, our quality staff, and Clay Pearson leading the way, and he's the one that people shoot at if it doesn't do good. But he didn't create the problem, he made it better. But as we grow, I think it's important that we remember if we develop the city as one of the lands, I think that in the future, we will solve a lot of the problems that we have today. I've heard people say that we need to do something about our tax rate. Well, the tax rate is based on the appraisal districts, evaluation of the property, and we have our tax rate that we apply to that. And that's where we build roads, that's where we build our facilities. But if we want to make that tax rate become more in our favor, if you continue doing what you do every day, making Pearland a very special community and one that is very welcoming, keep the amenities that we have, and also make sure that we do the things that need to be done to make Pearland very special, we'll have what I thought was one of the great opportunities for recognition of our progress. Lonzo came into Pearland for the special reason. The decision was made of a special basis of all the welcoming of the city, the appearance that we have, the landscaping, the quality improvements, and the safe city and the staff that we have. And they said, "We looked at a lot of other cities, but we chose Pearland for those reasons." Let's keep it up. Let's make sure that we continue. Because I think that if we're going to spend our time down here working on issues, we're going to do it the right way for the right reason. And all of our decisions should be made in the best interest of the city of Pearland. I've enjoyed my service here. I'm not leaving Pearland. I have an opportunity to, several years ago, to do that. And it was, didn't work out because I was working the space center. So I decided to quit flying the shuttle, so I'm going to leave there. I'm going to stay, stick to being a city council member. And I've been very fortunate to have such quality guys here that some of those here I could name, and from now there, Cole and Perez and good staffing, like Coker and Crystal and Trent and Clay, who's been our steady person that we made a decision on several years ago. Let's get somebody that can lead us and be, look to the future and make it brighter. We've done that in the past. Let's keep it up so that as I get older, and when they all get old and I'm going to have to make some decisions about what I'm going to do then, I want to be able to say, wow, isn't this a special community? Isn't this a place where people come in, and when they do come in, they also pay taxes? And we're going to pay taxes. We didn't have an opportunity to be able to do the things that we want to do and do like we did this past year, lower tax rate by two cents because we've made some positive progress. Let's keep it up. I think we've got a great council coming up. Mayor is, has quite a bit of experience as a council member. And I know that we'll have a wonderful, wonderful community as we progress. Thank you for giving me a chance to be part of your community. Thank you for being part, of seeing you again because I think you're going to do a good job, and you have always done a good job, and I appreciate that. And I want to congratulate you for that.
Thank you, thank you for all of those kind words. And I look forward to seeing the mayor just about every day. Gets here about 10 o'clock in the morning and does his thing. And it's good to have you around the corner. And if I need something, I can stick my head in, so it's good.
You know, there was an old story about the guy that married this beautiful divorcee. And at the house, it was from everyone's point of view. It's kind of tricky because we live about 65 feet apart. But I want to make sure that I'm not the mayor that says, "Oh, you're a reporter." Once this thing is settled, I'd like to have a chance to visit more with you, learn with you, and also to be able to say, "Welcome to our city." We've got a wonderful council. To make me proud, along with everybody else, even Jimmy over at Public Day. He's smiling every day.
All right, Councilmember Moore, come on down. Come on down. Double duty tonight. Double duty, yeah, it's good. I'm going to read the same thing. Certificate of recognition, whereas the here and after named as unselfishly contributed time, talents, and energies to serve the people of land. And whereas such contribution has become a part of the foundation upon which this city stands. And whereas the members of the city council, city of Pearland, Brazoria, Harris, and Fort Bend Counties, state of Texas, deem it fitting and proper to recognize the service and contributions of Gary Moore, council member from 2014 through 2020, and served as mayor pro tem in 2016. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Pearland, Texas hereby express their heartfelt appreciation to Gary Moore for his unselfish contributions and service to the city of Pearland and its citizens, as presented by the city council, city of Pearland, Texas this 25th day, January 2021. And one of the things that you always brought to the table was unselfishness. You've been a servant for this city from day one, and I appreciate that as a citizen, somebody that supported you along the way and was always there as a resource. And I know you went into every single meeting, every single issue for what was best interest for the city. And people couldn't have asked for a better servant and a servant leader than you. And with that, I'd like you to invite you to say a few words and express that to the people.
Thank you. It truly was an honor to serve the city and everybody that lived in it. It's been a great experience, one that I will treasure. And I can't say enough about my peers, council members I served with. We seen a change from the time when I first got on, from five members to six and then to seven. That was a huge difference from how we operated before. But nonetheless, we still got stuff done. Just took a little bit longer with those two extra voices, but we got it done. But I truly enjoyed my time on council and I appreciate, you know, all of my peers', you know, input and discussions that we had. I kind of asked to serve with better people. And for as far as staff goes, I mean, y'all were always there. When I made a phone call, I had questions, especially you, Mr. Pearson. We talked a lot. Trent, you too, Darren, just thank y'all for being there and support for me to be able to get things done. I plan to stay involved in the community. Just do things in, you know, different fashion, but spend a lot more time with the family and my new grandson. You can't, I can't explain how proud it... When you're a first parent, you're really proud of that first child. But when you become a grandparent, it's a hundredfold. It's way different. And I really appreciate, you know, my daughter being close and her family so that we can spend time with the grandson. So plan on doing that and staying involved in the community. And hopefully, we can get this COVID stuff out of the way and get back to some normal, whatever that might be. So again, thank you, and it was truly an honor to serve.
Calling to order this regular city council meeting for Monday, January 25th, 2021 at 6:35 PM. With that, I'd like to call on Mayor Emeritus Tom Reed to open us with a prayer, followed by Councilmember Trent Perez for our pledges to the flag. Please rise.
Okay. Lord, these are tough times that we're facing, and we still love you, and we still love the opportunity to be your wonderful, wonderful bunch of citizens in Pearland and working together to make our city a very special one in spite of the pandemic that we're facing. We love you because you've given us so many positive things like our beautiful city, our beautiful trees, our weather that was sometimes not as pretty as we would like, but that's part of your menu of gifts to us. We ask that you be with us because we have so many people that are suffering. We ask that you lay your hand on the head of each one of those and give them comfort and guidance and make them feel that maybe there is a better way and a better life. But we need to make sure that the life we do have in Pearland and the earth is one of positive contribution and one that we all enjoy in being a part of. Thank you so much for being very special to us. We ask that you look after our city council, our staff, our personnel and our city employment and our citizens. Our citizens are very special, and we know that they're very fragile as well. We are working to make sure that they are taken care of as we could, within our ability to do so. And we thank you for being here to kind of help and guide us and give us a feeling of there is not an end to all of this. There is sometimes, in some ways, a beginning. So as we go through the life of our pandemic, through the hardships that our citizens have, and as we go about being a special city for all of us, we ask that you be with us and walk with us, that we may walk with you in the future. And Lord, thank you so much for what you've contributed, and we ask this in your name and for your sake. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, free and justice for all. Out of the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you both for opening us that way. Mayor Emeritus Reed, thank you. Thank you again for your service. Great to see you. Great to see you here, and I can't wait, as you mentioned, to get this pandemic over with because you've got a lot of ambassador left in you, and we want to put you to work. So we thank you. All right, moving on into our agenda, wanted to roll call certification of our quorum. All council members are present. We have two council members, Cam Carr and Councilmember Hernandez, online, and the rest are here in the chambers. With that, we do have some citizen comments that did sign up to speak, and the order, we have two that are speaking to a specific agenda item and two that are not. And first up is Carol Arch Buechek. All right, and do we have our clock set somewhere?
You don't need to time me, I'm fine. But you can get ready to time somebody else. Good evening, thank you, Mayor Cole, and good evening, councilmen and all of the city staff. We've been busy working on my last annual banquet and meeting, which is Thursday night, and I was not for sure how many of you are coming. I know there are some council members who will be there, but for those of you who won't be there, I wanted you to be the first to know, and you probably have already heard, but Gary and I are leaving. I'm leaving the chamber, he's leaving the SBDC June 30 of this year, if I don't get fired or get COVID and die or whatever before then, but that's the plan. And it's just been a very, very exciting, sometimes frustrating, productive, and worthwhile 18 years I've been here. And so I want to thank each of you, even though, if you think back, where were you 18 years ago? How old were you? I know Tony Carbone was on our board in 2009 or so, and he was just a kid. So Darren, you're going to be the elder statesman of this whole time that I've been here. I'm leaving you behind. And so I wish you the best of luck in the city. I know that it will go forward, just as it has in the past, fruitfully and successfully, not without problems, not without being upset, not without frustrations, but just like in a marriage, great at the end. So I wish you all well, and if I don't see you at the banquet, I will see you sometime between now and June 30. God bless and have a great life, and go Pearland.
Carol, thank you for those comments, and likewise, everyone needs to have the opportunity to swing by the chamber on the months to come and give proper goodbyes and great contributions to our community, the years that you've been here. And I've worked with you closely as a council member and now as a mayor, and it's all been good, and everybody's got a great heart for Pearland. And you certainly blazed a trail with our chamber. What a great organization that you've brought it up to be to this point, and look forward to see where and what the days ahead lead us. So it'll be exciting. With that, I'm going to bring up Jimmy Davis. You're up.
Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combsno Street. Gentlemen, the Olson and Olson report on page four opened the door to the possibility that senior administration knew well before November 2019 about the growing problem. They go on to identify three opportunities to recognize the gap. Final opportunity was by August 2019, when they sent you, City Council, the monthly water survey revenue report, which clearly showed the lag in read dates. All of you, with the exception of Councilmen Carbone and Cam Carr, received that report. They say if anyone understood what they were looking at, the problem would have been obvious. Staff created that report and modified it to highlight the problem. In August 2019, the city of Pearland was preparing and presenting the budget for fiscal year 20. Included in that budget was a 5% rate increase. Revenues and expenses for prior years presented in that budget that may have factored into approving the rate increase were misrepresented. Fiscal year 2018 numbers in the budget reflected a total underrepresentation of almost $15.6 million, based on my review of the 2018 CAFR and the fiscal year 20 budget documents presented August 2019. Presenting a bleak picture, the financial health of the enterprise fund would likely factor into approving a 5% rate increase. Add to that, the city of Pearland in the month of February 2019 started a narrative that revenue was down because of weather, despite the fact that people don't water their grass in December, January, and February, hence issues in those months for the winter quarter average. That narrative was repeated for many months, setting the tone for a rate increase. City of Pearland asked for and received a 5% rate increase to water charges, a 5% increase over 2019 rates of $2,625,000. On the budget, total enterprise fund summary, page 56 of the 81-page PDF those presented, City of Pearland expected to then to end the year with $3.99 million, more than they needed to cover the expenses. That means 100% of the rate increase would be going to sit in the City of Pearland bank account. Without the increase, the city would end up with revenues exceeding expenses, including the additional reserve for debt service. The same page indicates that our cash reserves, which was supposed to be at a 25% minimum, was going to grow to 66% of that year. The amended budget ended the year with a 76% reserve ratio, representing a fiscal year 20 reserve net increase of 19%. In the staff report to Raff Tellis, they stated that the estimated amount of unbilled consumption
You did say, you did say with the exception of B.
That's right.
I heard it. All right. Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
I could read his lips. He said aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt the consent agenda, items A through F, with the exception of item B.
All right, thank you, thank you for that. Councilmember Orlando, go ahead and put item B on the table, please.
Consideration and possible action resolution number R 2021-6, so moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, good evening. Item B is a recommendation for squaring the actual costs of the contract with Sprint Waste. They provide the haul away from some wastewater processes. This is for last fiscal year and the original amount was estimated best based upon some of the, you know, best information at the time in terms of prior experience. We were slow to recognize and get some invoicing taken up and, but this brings that, or the actual services that were rendered. And we have a new contract for the new fiscal year, but this looks back to bring that to speed and we will have better estimates and a better process for bringing those as part of that, you know, during the year. And so we are not so far behind as we are with this one, so nothing to add.
Councilmember? Yeah, I mean, as staff mentioned, I mean, we've got the memo dated December 22nd where we show we overran by what, 73K? And then we come back and update it here on January 7th for another, what, 67K? I guess can you add a little bit more detail into kind of, I guess, how we, we blew through the budget amount and then came with an estimate of 423 and then had to update it again to 490?
Right, so as I alluded to, there was invoices that we either, a combination didn't get from Sprint, but more so, I believe we found, didn't put those into the system and recognize those, so we didn't have the whole picture, we reported that the first time. And so that's why, but now we've, believe we've got them all and that's what the amount is for the actual usage.
Okay, and I mean, have we looked into the process to correct that going forward?
Yes, it's been done and corrections being made, so.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021-6.
All right, thank you. Moving to item six, matters removed from consent agenda, which you just did. Item seven, new business. Councilmember Carbone, would you place that on the table? Actually, it's just a presentation, utility billing process and management review. And I think Josh is going to turn this over to the Raff Tellis.
Mayor, while they're bringing them on, just for everybody's background, bring up speed. City contracted with Raff Tellis last year. City Council saw that RFP and this for a process review, management review of our water utility billing processes. And they completed their work in December, circulated that report to you. And so we have a parallel Citizens Advisory ad hoc team that had their organizing meeting and already started last week and they'll be meeting again next Monday to help look at that. And staff simultaneously is also reviewed and made comments and is working on some of the recommendations already. So as you mentioned, Raff Tellis is on the line for their presentation. Michelle Ferguson is going to start that out.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Michelle Ferguson and I am Vice President with Raff Tellis. We are pleased to be with you tonight and appreciate the city manager's introduction there in terms of process. When we began this work back in September, it was clear that the utility-
Michelle, hang on one second. Hang on one second. Josh, can you make sure that the sound is boosted in the chambers?
Yes, give me just one second, okay? Okay, Michelle, we elevated the audio levels as high as we can here, but if you can make sure to speak very close and clearly into your microphone.
Certainly, I will try not to blast the eardrums of those listening virtually. As I was saying, as we began our work back in September, it was very evident to us that the utility billing process had frankly been under quite a bit of scrutiny as well as strain. And we were brought in to really review the process, the utility billing process as it existed at the time. And really to work with the council as well as the organization to navigate a path toward better transparency and really improvement in the process overall. As you all know, the utility billing process is quite a complex process. And the good news, I would say, is that you should rest assured that you have very dedicated staff that is committed to looking for and implementing improvements to the process. Throughout this process, we'll talk a little bit more about that in detail, but we worked directly with staff throughout this. They were very open. They provided us access to any and all of the information that we asked for, so we were able to conduct the review in an unbiased and unobstructed way, which I think has great value. But they are staff that, many of whom were not here several years ago and even for some, several months ago. And they are working very hard to make the improvements that they know are necessary to help restore the trust as well as the transparency that you as the elected officials, as well as the community at large, certainly expects. Unfortunately, there is no silver bullet. For those of you who have read the report, you know that improvements will take a combination of policy adjustments and decisions by you all as the elected leadership, as well as administrative and operational changes within the organization. Again, many of which are already underway. And so tonight, what we would like to do is talk a little bit more about the process we went through, as well as the key takeaways from our review and then certainly allow opportunity for any questions that you all may have. In terms of who's with me this evening, in addition to myself, I have two other colleagues with me, Seth Garrison, who served as the project manager for this engagement, along with Josh Roush, who was also a key member of the project team. In terms of who we are as Raff Tellis, some of you have had an opportunity to, we've had conversations with a number of you. But just in general, for background, we are a utility and local government management and financial and operational firm. Our specialty is working with utilities and local governments across the country. And we are staffed with well over 120 different consultants all across the country whose work is specifically dedicated towards utilities and local governments. We're also a municipal advisor. We are a registered municipal advisor and have all of the fiduciary responsibilities that come along with that designation. In terms of the project itself, we began this process by meeting with many of you. We had the opportunity to have conversations with you to understand your perspective about this work, so that helped guide the conversations that we then had with a myriad of staff throughout the city that are involved in the utility billing process. Nearly 40 different individuals were interviewed in total for this work. Our work, as I mentioned, was focused on the process as it currently exists today. And so that study included looking at workflows. We also looked at staffing and management practices within utility billing. We also conducted an independent review of the billing system and we looked for errors and anomalies in the system. And all of that work really resulted in a series of recommendations and suggestions and frankly, some pros and cons that we believe the council will need to spend time really understanding and also having discussion about in terms of that path forward to greater transparency. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Seth Garrison to walk us through some of those key takeaways. Seth, we can't hear you. Josh, would you be able to check Seth's microphone?
Yes, let me see if I can get him. Seth, can you try again, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
All right, great, thank you. I was struggling to get unmuted and I couldn't do it here remotely, so thank you. Thank you, Michelle, for that introduction. And let me talk about the key takeaways from our work. First of all, I want to emphasize that the meter to cash process is not broken. There are some things in there that can be improved, but as far as systematic errors go or other major problems, we were not able to detect any of those. Really, our report stresses a focus should be on continuous improvement and on workforce culture. And those will be able to make the improvements, I think, that everyone is looking for and help make the system much more efficient and effective. So also clear policy direction on critical items with both internal and external communication with customers, as well as improvements with AMI. And we've included some discussion about options with unbilled consumption. And this will help maximize the meter investment and customer engagement with AMI when that is finally rolled out in its completion, which will help with transparency as well as support process enhancements and help with some of the customer consumption issues. So before I go any further, while Michelle mentioned that our charge was not to really look historically, I want to set some historical context for what, how we approach the report. As everyone knows that is involved with Pearland and is in the city, there's been rapid growth in the city, 34% since the 2010 census. There's also been a lot of changes within the utility billing structure. New World, the financial and billing system was implemented several years ago. There was a mass meter replacement and also a shift to 28-day meter reading cycle a while ago. So a lot of changes going on. There's also been very significant staff changes. All the management folks that we were working with in utility billing are new since basically the spring of last year. Utility billing personnel involved in the decisions about the billing gap are no longer with the city, the senior folks in utility billing. And all the meter to cash managers that are mentioned are new as well too, as well as some movements with utility billing. And there are also some, several new frontline staff and new positions as well too. So we're really dealing with a new group since the billing gap was created a while ago. Let me talk about management and culture a little bit. Part of the issue that we identified in the study is a lingering culture which is now being transformed. And that culture really made some of the problems possible with the billing gap and it contributed to some of the turnover and impacted customer communications. There's a new tone being developed to foster more effective work culture that was very obvious in talking with the staff. But as I mentioned before, changing this culture is going to take time and the transition is underway, but it is going to take time to fully realize all the benefits of that. And obviously, all the staff at all levels must participate. So let's talk about what we did in terms of analysis. We were charged with taking a sampling of the billing and looking at it for systematic errors. Because of the nature of the data that was available, we were able to do much more than that. We were able to look at all the bills that were generated over a period for all 38,938 accounts and perform an independent analysis outside of the New World billing system. Based on that analysis, we were able to automatically verify 98.5% of the accounts were correct in that analysis. Now, that doesn't mean the other 1.5% showed an error, but what that does indicate is we were able to rule out any systematic billing issues in the billing system. We did not check the meter accuracy, that would have required field measurement. So our assumption was the meter measurements coming in were accurate. We were just looking at the billing system. Now, that 1.5%, approximately 551 bills, those are largely bills that are generated outside the geography that have different rate structures or they are more complex meters, such as compound meters for the system. And we checked with staff on those. There were no systematic errors that we found in those and there's a reasonable level of comfort that those calculations are being done properly and accurately. Let's switch to unbilled consumption, which is a major issue. This was the central policy question we looked at, whether and how to collect unbilled consumption. Now, Raff Tellis estimates that there's roughly 5 million in unbilled consumption charges that are remaining. I believe that's roughly about 65 days worth of unbilled consumption. And there are some discussions about how that consumption is calculated. Our estimates were based on average daily consumption by meter size and did not include base rate charges because customers have consistently paid base rate charges. And there have, as far as we are able to determine, no additional base rate charges that have been charged or that are owed for the period. So again, our charges were based on average day consumption by meter size and we calculated roughly $5 million in unbilled consumption at the time of publication of our report. In our report, we looked at different options for dealing with that unbilled consumption, to write off the unbilled consumption, to prorate the unbilled consumption as sort of a recovery fee, that is, convert the unbilled consumption into a cash figure and then bill that as a recovery fee for each person. And that can be done incrementally or that could be done as a lump sum. Also, bill the full catch-up amounts as part of a true-up plan or recover consumption as currently planned right now using the 3232 plan. And I want to stress that all of these options are policy options. There's no correct industry standard or no way to deal with this that is a right way from an industry or technology standpoint. It's really a policy decision which the city determines to do of these options. And each case creates some issues with fairness and equity since the unbilled consumption happened in the past and therefore, under a different rate structure. And therefore, there are going to be some issues with fairness and equity no matter which policy option is selected. So in front of you, I've presented a chart and this chart has a lot more detail in the report, but it basically shows some of the pros and cons of each of- But it basically shows some of the pros and cons of each of the four alternatives that you have. And you see each of them have significant pros and cons. You know, things like writing off will allow a clean slate. But it also creates problems with revenue, obviously. And it foregoes almost five million unbilled revenue. There are problems with virtually every one of the options that are out there. But there are also some pros as well as them, too. With the current approach that you're looking at right now, which has already been communicated to customers, it really has no software billing implications and it allows you to collect the full amount owed. But it creates some issues, such as in some instances thirteen billings in some years. It may have some impacts with future equity. It complicates the AMI implementation and it creates a few process inconsistencies. So let's talk about some process improvements aside from the billing gap and from the issues we talked about previously with the checking of the accounts. As AMI and the meter upgrades continue, there's going to be some new opportunities, some significant new opportunities to enable remote meter reading for alerts and meter management, which I think is going to help the citizenry better understand what's going on. The new solid-state meters tend to be more accurate and last longer, which will be a positive as well, too. And then there'll be opportunities to resynchronize the meter reading and billing cycles. So eventually, depending on which plan you choose, people will be able to look at their meters online, be able to see what their consumption was and have those eventually synchronized with the billing cycle, again, depending on which option you choose. There's also options that we outlined in the report to streamline the meter-to-cash process and data validation and to allow the meter services staff to troubleshoot issues before they become billing issues. And this is very important as you're thinking about how the meter-to-cash process works right now. Right now, if there is a problem with the meter that's not obvious and picked up by the homeowner or an issue that's detected by folks right off the bat, it has to get into the billing system. Errors are generated in the billing system. They have to dispatch somebody out to the property to look at that. And that greatly complicates and slows down the billing process. In the future, with AMI, a lot of those issues will be detectable. They'll send a report indicating that there's a problem with the meter, which hopefully can get fixed before that gets into the billing system and then has to be adjusted. We're really looking forward to these because I think they're going to support enhanced customer service communication and service and provide customers with some direct access. They also help reduce issues with leaks and broken meters. We also talk in our report about some technology systems and processes associated with the meter-to-cash process. We talk about the AMI, the next phase and the process, major process and staff realignments that are going to be needed to fully utilize that technology. We also talk about the multi-department and team-based approach that's going to be needed to work on those. And that's going to involve some different roles, some different processes within the staff and very close relationship between billing and collections along with the meter services folks. And communication, both internal and external, is going to be very important with that. And we outlined some recommendations in the report on that. So with that, I would like to open it up for questions for folks, if folks have questions about the report.
All right, thank you both Seth and Michelle for the presentation. And with that, as they said, this is a time for our council to ask some questions with Raff Tellis on the line. I know we've got a couple of members of our citizens committee here in the chambers as well as several are online watching as well. What I would ask is we're trying to set up our meeting next Monday with the committee that Raff Tellis will have access to the committee as well to be able to ask some direct questions with them. Since this is a council meeting and the rest of the council won't be in that meeting next Monday, we'll keep most of our questions and comments here to the council. But I would ask if committee members have specific questions of Raff Tellis, to go ahead and send those in to me so we can forward those on and they can be prepared on Monday for any kind of specific questions to them. We might also find that two, three, or all eight of you may have some of the same questions. So then we can put those together and they can be prepared for that. So with that, I'll open it up to the council for any questions or comments.
Mayor, I believe there was a couple of citizens that wanted to speak. We can get them.
I didn't have a...
Earlier, didn't you mention?
Yeah, they're not on this issue.
Oh, okay.
I don't know three.
Okay, all right.
No, thank you for keeping me on track. If I was out of line, we needed to make sure that we grouped them in. But they're wanting to speak on another issue.
Sure, we can drum some up if you want.
Yeah, that's okay. That'll work.
Mayor, I would just say at this point, while I have some thoughts and concerns about some of the information that was provided in the report and was in the summary, in order to get fresh intel from the citizens committee, I prefer not to offer any opinions at this point. We've kind of, as a committee, or I'm sorry, as a council, said, we want to get their information to us and then essentially have three alternate recommendations, Raff Tellis, the comments that we've received from staff, and then what the citizens believe is the best alternative. So I would prefer that we get that information fresh without a whole lot of input from us. Again, that's just my opinion because we're, I believe, to be fair to the committee, we're not going to provide any action until, or have any action on this item until they've done their work and produced a report to us.
And with that, let me address some of that as we discussed last week with the first committee meeting. Gave them a charge to, number one, be, you know, they have the Raff Tellis report. They have the staff response. They're online and in the chambers today. And then asked them specifically that if you go back and look at their scope, that they weigh in on the Raff Tellis report sooner rather than later. Also shared with them that if you'll look at the report, there are a number of the sixteen items that Raff Tellis came forward with that staff agree with completely and are in the process of moving forward. And then, so I asked the committee to take a look at all of those and then potentially, and hopefully, next Monday, that of the sixteen, you know, I can't remember the exact number. There's probably ten or eleven or even twelve that they, that staff just completely agrees with and wants to move forward. We get the committee to weigh in on those and send us that recommendation as soon as possible so we could have that on our February agenda. And then secondly, because the thirty-two thirty plan has potential budget implications, I've asked them to take that issue up specifically on its own and advance it forward as soon as possible. I've challenged them to hopefully get that in a month. But I know that there's probably going to be some iterations back to staff, financial, you know, impacts and those types of things. The goal would be to have that specific item back in front of the council as soon as possible. Again, because it has budget impacts on the back half of this year. So we're not waiting until June, July to get that recommendation. So they liked the approach of that and we're hoping to keep to that approach moving forward.
Mr. Garrison, can I go ahead and start going into your report?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you define, my wife's a consultant for Deloitte. So there's always these really funny terms that are really loaded in consultant world. Can you tell me what culture means? What does that mean? And why did that make impacts that caused this problem?
Thank you. That's a great question. You know, culture, how we define it is the attitudes, the ways of doing business, the methods of staff in general within our organization. And what we mean by that is in the past, there was a culture of not asking a lot of questions, doing your job, but only focusing narrowly on that particular area that you were focused on. And what we're promoting in our report is more communication between the different groups, which has already started under the administration, and really looking at how processes and how activities that one group is doing affects another group.
Can you give a concrete example of what that means by the do your job? Because it sounds like you had ninety-eight, ninety-eight point five percent of the meters were correct. So I just, I want to, I want to put the pieces back together because the general public doesn't go and read the Olson report and they're probably not even going to read your report. And I want to kind of understand how one point five percent of people didn't do their job or how this got screwed up.
No, I don't think that's the correct interpretation. Ninety-eight point five percent of the bills were checked and correct just by using the automated process that we use. One point five percent of the meters had to be manually verified because they're either outside jurisdiction, that means they have a different rate structure because they're part of a different jurisdiction, or it's a more complicated meter so you couldn't use the same straightforward billing approach on those.
Okay. So I guess I'm still, I'm still struggling with the cause as Raff Tellis is defining it, is that the culture was screwed up? Is that what you're telling me in plain words?
Well, I guess I would say, I wouldn't use the term screwed up. But what I would say is when the initial billing gap was created, there was not more pushback from staff on the issues that would be created because of that billing gap. And that's what we're deeming as the cultural issue.
That nobody asked, I guess nobody asked the question then. I mean, pushback is now a stronger word. So did somebody do something that maybe needed pushback and there wasn't? I guess I'm unclear on that.
Well, when there was a gap created between the meter reading cycle and the billing cycle, that could have created and did create an issue which led to the consumption, unbilled consumption.
So we didn't have a communication issue then? Somebody just didn't speak up? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, that, I would define that as a communication issue. When people don't speak up, when there is an error occurring or there's issues and they don't feel it's their place or don't feel empowered to speak up, that is a communication issue.
Okay. Let me ask you a question. We have a lot of people that think that the city has no credibility. I think this issue has really exacerbated that. Is this some kind of, you think, conspiracy or just stupidity or just lack of communication that caused this issue? Because I just want to clear that you told me ninety-eight point five percent of the meters are correct. Could we just be in a situation where maybe somebody made an error and we just did not address the error promptly enough and it has kind of metastasized to what we're dealing with now?
Yeah, again, I would say ninety-eight percent of the bills were able to be checked through a standardized routine. It's those one point five that there's a different rate calculation methodology with those. So those are not incorrect bills. Those are just bills that were calculated differently. So, and again, I would go back to, I believe, communication error is probably the best way to categorize what happened. We couldn't find any conspiracy. I wouldn't convey anything as a conspiracy.
So nobody's stealing from residents. Nobody is intentionally hiking their rate. Nobody is out there trying to make people feel pressure economically.
Not as far as we could tell. Absolutely not. Not as far as we could tell.
Okay. Let me ask you a question. How much of this, in your experience, is probably not going to ever get collected? We're talking five million dollars as a placeholder number, we think. What percentage of that probably never comes to the coffers of the city, in your experience?
Well, this is somewhat of a unique issue because of the long period that it's gone on. You know, we haven't had a lot of these issues where you have a consumption lag that goes on for multiple months at a time. So this is somewhat unique. And I would say your ability to collect really depends on which method you choose to collect. If you choose the thirty-two thirty plan, you know, you should have a high likelihood of collecting a majority of it. If you choose one of the other plans, you're going to have different options in terms of collection.
Okay, let me ask you a couple of follow-on questions and I'll shut up. Normally speaking, do you normally see cities enact a plan and about twenty-five percent of the way through completely shake the plan up for the sake of shaking it up? Is that normally what you see?
It depends on what type of plan you're talking about.
Say like a thirty-two thirty plan.
This is somewhat of a unique situation, like I've explained to you before. I don't think we have any history and we've worked with over twelve hundred utilities of having more than a year period of unbilled consumption accruing before it's corrected.
So we're really, really special, is what it sounds like.
This is a fairly special example, yes.
Okay. All right. I'll leave it to my friends on the council. Thank you for clarifying those couple of items.
Thank you.
Any others?
Yeah, since we're on the slide eleven, the ninety-eight and a half percent and one point five percent. I guess, could you, could you give us a flavor of, you took data from the city and then recalculated bills and compared them to the bills that we issued?
Yes, that's correct. What we did is we took your raw metering data that you had and that metering data we put into an independent computer database, ran the analysis and then verified those against what your billing system was calculating for a bill.
Okay, so I guess the issue I have is kind of the whole garbage in, garbage out. If we gave you, if we gave you the wrong reading or if our system said, hey, it was twenty-two thousand gallons, you recalculated and said, great, that's the right bill for twenty-two thousand gallons. But if there was, if there was an estimation or some sort of, some issue prior to taking the volumetric reading and getting it to you, I mean, you're testing one. This analysis is one kind of small piece of that. And because we've seen, I mean, I've seen more issues because the way I read this is ninety-eight and a half were easy to do. The other one point five, you figured out, high level and therefore were a hundred percent accurate. And I've got to disagree with that.
So let me clarify a little bit here is we took the raw meter readings from the meter reading system that you have and then we applied the calculations to those readings. And as I indicated in the presentation, that we did not test for meter errors or other errors in the meter collection system that are out there. We're under the assumption that those are accurate. But without a complete audit of all the meters in the system with testing those, which really isn't feasible to do, we have to go under the assumption that the meter readings and the way they're calculating, the meter readings are correct.
And just to, Councilmember Carbone, I would add in there, just to reiterate something that you said, that yes, this was intended to help identify whether or not there was a systematic issue as it relates to the billing process itself. And so by this analysis, we were able to rule out that as being a systematic problem. So yes, it is only part of the issue, but we believed it was a critical piece to, again, provide some assurance that there isn't a systemic issue within the billing process itself that led to some of the discrepancies that residents and customers have experienced.
Okay, perfect. That certainly helps. Yeah, explain that side of it. And I guess at some point, staff can chime in in terms of the meters that we have tested and kind of the fault rate. I mean, I think the AMI has proved to be accurate, but I'll let staff opine on that. And then, like the mayor was saying, I do look forward to hearing what the ad hoc committee has to say specifically around the item number six, I believe, where they have the three options. So I'll hold my opinions till we get there.
Yeah, I had a few comments as well. First of all, appreciate this analysis. I think a good way to couch this and with a lot of what Member Carbone said as well is just kind of on the first page, it says, quote, "There are no simple solutions that can immediately transform utility billing operations." And so I appreciate the billing calculation analysis. I guess what I would ask for y'all's input on is, I think a big portion of this, that what we hear from our constituents and what we see in the community and on social media is, you know, maybe there's this billing calculation component, there's this other component. There's this other component that's, hey, my, I, my bill came in and it says I used three times as much water as I did this month last year. Um, and, and it's this sticker shock. And so I, I know that wasn't something that you guys looked at, uh, but I, I, I think that's a piece of this. And so would you have any recommendations as we continue to explore this? As our ad hoc committee looks into this, what have you seen done there to address issues like that in some of these other twelve hundred cities that you've worked with?
Sure, let me respond to that. First of all, I would say to those constituents you have, there is no problem that we can detect in the billing system that's creating any kind of erroneous billing issue. So any issue related to overbilling or, or registering consumption wrong would have to be on the meter side if there was that issue. And that has to do with either meter accuracy or resolution of the meters or how the meters were installed. There could be theoretically issues with that that are causing an issue. I think in many cases, if there was an old meter in a location previously and that was replaced by a newer, more accurate meter, you would expect a higher amount of consumption for the same period.
Thank you, yeah, I, I appreciate that. And, and yeah, I understand that this validates, it's, it, there's, doesn't seem to be an issue on the calculation side. That seems to be good. I, I guess just what I would, the, the goalpost that I want to set down, both for the, the rest of the council and for our ad hoc billing committee as we go off and try to solve these problems. What are the problems that we are trying to solve? And I, I, I think the report that Raftellus prepared was very thorough. It was long, um, and I, I think it shows that there's a lot of different issues. And just kind of off the, in the last couple of minutes, just writing this down, you know, there's a, there's this cultural issue that's, that's being addressed. There's the billing backlog issue. There's the, the reliability of the meters, some kind of question about that. There's also the billing calculation issue, which we, we've checked off. We think that's maybe not really an issue. Um, and then there's just this general issue of trust i- in the entire department. And so I, I guess what my point is there is we are, we are now going to take this report. The ad hoc committee is going to review it. We're going to continue to review it on the council and, and try to solve the so-called problem. But really we have several interlocking problems that really exacerbate this and make this a, a tough thing. Maybe, maybe putting it more simply, uh, this is not a, a, an easy city function. Meter to cash is not an easy city function. And I, I guess you guys know more than almost anyone else how nuanced it is. But, but th- there's a lot going on here and I, I think we need to be really specific about what are we try, what we are trying to address. And maybe that's delineating that in, in the, the first major, um, the, the first major ad hoc committee meeting. Or maybe that's some direction that we can give up here. But I, I think even if we just said, go and take this report and, and look at the recommendations, that wouldn't address, for instance, this meter credibility issue. And so I, I think it's, it's kind of like, let's clearly define the problem. Uh, I, I think that this report gives us a, a better ability to do that. But just want to share those thoughts for, for my colleagues and for the members of the ad hoc committee. But again, thank you for this report. And yeah, any thoughts you have on that would be appreciated as well.
And Councilmember, I, I would just add that one of the other issues that I would add to your, your list of challenges is really the opportunity that the city has with AMI. And moving forward with AMI implementation is really one of the critical steps in helping to create some of those solutions that I, that I know that you, as well as the community and the organization frankly, is, is in need of. And I think that is, the timing is challenging because you're on top of all these other issues right now. And also the organization is dealing with AMI implementation. But that is one of the key pieces of, of resolution in the process.
Absolutely, and I would say, uh, yeah, that what's pretty cool here is that I, I like things to be done systematically and not just one off, you know, somebody's mad about something and calls in. But having a systematic process to, to be able to address problems. And AMI, I think, from my understanding and from your analysis, gives us the ability to do that. We can set thresholds and say, hey, somebody can say if my bill's coming in and it's twenty percent more than it was last month, or if it's twenty percent more than this time last year, I can automatically get an alert. I don't have to find out when I get the bill in the mail. I can be proactively notified and we can do something to address that upfront and in a systematic way. So no, I, I agree, I think that's a huge opportunity. And I think we should really be cognizant of that, that this has been a, a dark, unpleasant path at some point. But there is this light at the end of the tunnel that we can end up in a much better position than we ever have been.
Right, Councilmember Riley also want to reiterate also in the scope that we talk about Raftellus and some of the recommendations and weigh in on it. But then the fourth bullet point, you know, talk specifically about provide additional recommendations. So outside of Raftellus, to the council as they apply to utility building systems, processes and infrastructure. Infrastructure would be meters. So part of their task is let's get beyond Raftellus and what else? And we get our arms around, um, because they didn't specifically test the meters themselves. So Raftellus didn't render an opinion necessarily on the meter. So that may be, you know, something we want to, we want to task the group to do specifically. We can do that. I think some of the members already have that in their, you know, kind of to-do list to bring up. I will ask a, a couple of questions and that is, you know, going, going and testing the meters themselves. We just, we just installed forty thousand meters or almost forty thousand meters. So, you know, and we saw what that cost was. You know, my question would be, is it, would it be prudent for us to maybe do a control group from the meters? You know, so much in each billing cycle and those types of things and just randomly pick meters and have them checked, make sure that they were installed properly, make sure that they were, um, you know, set up properly according to our system. And so that, and, and I don't know if that would be a way to go back and check the, the, the meters themselves and kind of give a, a check on it. As opposed to all of a sudden, somebody has a spike in their bill, so they dispute it. We go out and we, we, you know, pull the meter, we check it, we check it for accuracy. Do we be, should we be proactive and, and set up some type of a control group? I'll, I'll let Seth or, or Michelle answer that as, as, as a best practice in the situation we in. Like I said, we just completed a meter rollout and, you know, installed all these meters. So would it be prudent to then maybe pull a control group?
Yeah, no, this is, uh, I think that's a, that's a great idea. I would check with the manufacturer on any testing that was done. According to AWWA standards, those meters that are going, uh, that's the American Waterworks Association. According to their standards, any meters that should be going into a system, a, a group of those should be tested for accuracy. But now with them installed, I would also encourage, um, you know, to do that kind of a pilot study as well too and see what type of accuracy that you're getting.
So having, having said that, Seth, thank you, I'll ask Mr. Pearson and our staff. Did we on the front end of the meter rollout? So this goes back to, I guess, middle of twenty eighteen when we started that. Did we do a control group on the front end of the meter install? You know, making sure that they were set up properly and configured properly and those types of things?
So a couple of things in there, um, and some males can chime in, but, um, you know, the configuration would be different than the actual flow measurements, right? So the configurations do get, you know, checked and double checked and, uh, you know, and they're, part of the complexity is the, the different systems and, uh, they're trying to communicate and download data, et cetera. But, uh, so I'll, I'll try, we're going to, we're going to give you a list. You know, we have done the polls of meters and when people requested that and, you know, disputed, et cetera. And so I want to get you a, a detailed list and a summary. You know, from what I've seen, uh, as you would expect with new meters and, and more accurate solid state, those come back, there, there's not issues with them. So what I think you're talking about is, uh, you know, doing something. I, I think we'd want to understand the, um, cost return of that, you know, uh, and, and what we're trying to find. I mean, if we do a, a set and, and how far you wanted to go with that. Because again, you know, these are standard meters that are in all over the country and the world. And, uh, you know, they are, they, they do provide that ex, they're, they're accurate. And so, uh, you know, we, out of the forty thousand, as you mentioned, we had a couple of installs that were south. We've, we fixed those. So, uh, um, you know, that's, that's an area I think we can try to get some more info on, um, as we go forward.
And I will say this, uh, in talking to staff and, and I'll move on to the other council members on questions. We, we talked about, you know, the meters are, are, are meters. Then you have the AMI, which AMI, which is a process that we're moving to. And staff does have, once we have all of the infrastructure, the towers, the communication towers and those types of things up and going and running. Staff has told me that they're looking at doing a control group on the whole AMI system from start to finish to make sure, um, you know, bugs are out of it before it goes live. So it, it, so I'm, I'm looking at, did we do that on the front end with the meters themselves? Would it be prudent to go and, and, and pull at random a hundred meters across town to see if they were done properly, that type of thing?
Sorry, Mayor, if I could address that real briefly. All the meters are tested at the factory and we can get those certificates for those. So that's the first place. And then we have pulled, I believe, about twenty five meters, um, since they've been implemented and those all tested accurately. So that may not be a big enough, you know, that's, that's the sample we have at this point. So, but additional testing would be available if we wanted to do something like that. But as Mr. Pearson said, we need to look at the, what the, the cost benefit is there.
Mr. Apperson, this is Member Camcar. Just for edification for other people watching, how do you test a water meter? I'm not an engineer and I don't know this, I'm not a professional. How does one go about saying that a water meter is reading correctly?
So I'm not going to be able to give you the real specifics of it. There, there are protocols called out for, I believe, through AWWA, uh, the same standards that the meters are set to. And it's hooked up to basically a test bench that's certified itself. And, and then water is run through it at different flow rates to see if it reads at those different flow rates accurately. You know, that's, I guess that's the best I can describe it.
Ask you a question developing off that. They have standards for a half inch tap and a three quarters inch tap and a larger tap. Is that correct?
So is the question, does AWWA have standards for?
Terms of they know the amount per minute or per ten minutes or whatever for the different sizes? Because that's obviously was a question that has been brought up in the media. Is we have different people with different sized caps and these are all screwed up and they're not reading correctly. And I just wanted to, I want to disabuse that notion that there are different standards for different sizes and for different users. Is that correct?
So I don't, I don't know if I'd characterize it as different standards. There is a different amount of fluid that will flow through a different sized meter. So for our five eight cents meters, which is our standard residential meter, there, there's a maximum amount of flow rate based on pressure and that, that can go through that. And, um, the AWWA standards require testing at different flow rates to see if it's correctly, correctly and accurately calculating the amount of water going through the meter at those different flow rates.
Different sized taps have different flow rates and the AWA has a different standard for those different sized taps?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Mayor, I had, uh, got a few comments on this. The report was really good. And, uh, as I've looked into the Raftellus report, they said that this actually started occurring about five years ago. The problem on this. And so number one, I couldn't help but go back through with the Olson report. Because when I got to looking at the number, uh, on Raftellus report, they said something about, uh, five million of unbilled. And on the Olson report and working with the, the city and the members here, it said in one year period of time that it went from three point seven to eight point seven. And somewhere through the mechanism here, it's, uh, it even goes up to eleven. I think eleven five, I believe it was, was the number. And so it, it seems like that we really don't know. We don't know what was unbilled and, and the people were billed, but they got the, uh, two thousand gallons or whatever it was. And that was a bill and it says here that, uh, on this one, that it's usually sixty days after reading the mirror or, or reading, uh, out there on the meter. So, you know, as we go through here, it, uh, you know, you, you look at, you have to look at both these reports. And one of them was, you know, what they came in here and studied and the other is what, uh, you know, that went on during this period with Olson and Olson. And, uh, you know, it just came out through this of a lot of the discussions going on. It was really conflicting with each other, you know, on the, on the, uh, numbers that it was through there of what it is. And, and then when we come in and brought a new contract out, actually for New World, there was something that came up earlier that, uh, they had, uh, on New World that, uh, they had, uh, eight thousand dollars, uh, on there that was not billed. And, uh, so, you know, I asked the, the city manager at that time, you know, what we're going to do? Are they going to pay for it or, or what? And, uh, because there was an item on the agenda that night and I think it was a hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for New World on there. And at the same time, uh, the then finance director said, well, this is not the first time. And, uh, that this has happened. So I asked, you know, what were the first times that, that it happened? If this was lost to eight thousand dollars and what was the decision that came out in the email? That during this period of time, there's a lot of concern with the residents out here. And so we, uh, the, the city decided that what they would, they would not put that out to the public. And we would go ahead and, and just, uh, you know, not recognize the eight thousand dollars and, and pay it off, whatever, uh, on there. And so that was one thing that, uh, we never got answered as we went through on this. You know, how many times did it, uh, come out and happen? And then as the discussion went on, when we got to the item, talked about it, then it says, okay, well, what it is, is, is New World said what they would do, they would come back and work with city staff to train them. And so, you know, that brings up another concern that they've had this contract for several years. And, uh, we had staff that didn't know how to utilize that contract or, or actually the, the New World side of it. You know, to, so that was a, a problem that, that, uh, came out, uh, that when we looked at it. So, you know, we're running all through this with a lot of different things that, that, uh, that were going on doing this. And it brought up, you know, this report brought up that, that it occurred for, you know, five years ago, started doing that. And during that, the question had been asked, okay, why did we go to the twenty eighth day? I'm one of the council members sitting up here that have been here the longest and going back to a previous time that we never got that many. So we got one of the council members out there during that time. And we never really got that many concerns about overbilling from any of the residents or the commercial side of it. And so you kind of wonder why did we want to go to something else when everything was working so well at the, at that beginning time through there? And so that was, uh, you know, the, a lot of big concerns that we have over this. You know, um, we've got three opportunities here or, or three things to look at of what to do with the unbilled part of it. You know, and, and I was talking to an individual the other day. I said, it's like, you know, if you sever one of your veins in your arm, you sit there and complain about, you know, you're losing all this blood, but you never do nothing to, to fix it to where you don't lose anymore. And this is what happened to our water as it is right now. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, at eleven million or five million, whatever the number is, and somebody should be able to come up with it. Uh, I'm saying, we let it go. Let's just fix the problem. And, uh, and so we don't have it anymore. And, and not go out, I mean, that's just unbilled water that we sent out to the community or whatever, but it was never put on anybody's bill. And so, you know, that was not the residents here, their problem. It was a city problem. So why, you know, be so concerned about coming in and billing these people for all of this? You think you got heartaches now by the residents out there and the untrust of them, of that? You're going to have a lot more as it comes down, if you go back and try to get something, uh, money from them. And then I look back and, and like on this Raftellus report, uh, it says that this began about five years ago. And the other thing that concerns me is the time that council was brought in. I mean, if it started five years ago and we just got it at the end of twenty, why? If we were, wanted to be helping staff to do whatever needs to be done on there to get to the bottom of it, why wasn't we brought to the table quicker? We have people sitting in the audience who come in every council meeting and chastise the council members up here and said, none of you need to be sitting up there because you haven't fixed the problem. So, you know, this is just a huge concern that I don't think that, you know, we've done anything about it. We don't have anything written in policies of how to do this. We come in, we changed people out. We said, okay, if going to 28 day, that was this lady that caused that and she was terminated. She come back in the next council meeting and said, there was not, I was not terminated. I resigned. And give us the names of the other people that was there in the meeting who made that decision to go to 28 days. And I've asked that reason why? And we've been going through this all that time, why did we go to 28 days? Never got an answer on why we ended up doing that. So, you know, it, it's just a point of frustration with the whole thing. And I'm not, you know, the, the people out in the community, I can understand, certainly understand why they're concerned about this, you know. And, and everything has been brought up and a lot of time and effort has been brought up on this, but there's still not a plan to go in and, and fix this. I mean, like I say, we, we, you know, of course, it's senior staff, there's been other people that have been, are, are gone. There are new people that's in there that probably never worked in this before. There's $10 million been spent on meters. And yes, when, when I got the new meter in mind, I was looking through my window and I went out there and I talked to the guys. And I said, are y'all have any problems? They said, yeah, we're having problems. And I said, what's your problem? And they said, well, you've got a metal fitting going into a PVC pipe. And I said, well, what does that do? Said, well, you've had a lot of leaks through that on the connections. And Trent, I talked to you about that because they said that the city was taking care of that, going out and fixing those problems. And I asked you about it on there. Why are we doing it when they're installing it and, and the leak, you know, occurred when you was installing the meter and hooking it up for, to a PVC pipe and, and using a metal fitting to go into PVC pipe? And they said, no, the city was, you know, doing that. And, and a lot of them were after hours and what have you for them to do it. So, that's, you know, the concern. And I know, and I'm not the only council member sitting up here, it's asked a lot of questions and never got an answer to the question. But I think, you know, to go in and identify this, and my thought is, whatever the number is, forget it. Let's fix the problem so we don't have that incurred again. Just forget the number, whatever it is, and don't go back. You should have billed it and billed it out the first time, but it didn't happen. And so, you know, that's, that's my concern, you know. Just come in and say, okay, this was our mistake. This is what we've done. We didn't bill you for the water that was there. So what we need to do, we need to forget that and go in and see what we have to do if it's a Ralph Tillis report. If it's committee that we get here that's coming in, is going to sit and develop, you know, information on there, how we fix it, let's take a look at it, see how we're going to fix it. Don't worry about the other. I mean, we're spending more time, how are we going to go back and bill with this, whatever that number is, 5 million, 3 and a half million, or 11.5 million, or 8.7 million? Nobody knows what the number is on there. And we're spending more time trying to figure out how we can go back and bill with the general public on that. And at the same time, we still have the problem running rapidly.
Yep, Councilmember, let's move, Councilmember Little, I think, has had a comment.
Yeah, most, most of the issues I have down have sort of been addressed already by different council members. Going back to Councilman Owens, one of the things I had down was the difference between Olson report and the Ray Fellows report. And, you know, we've heard numbers all the way from 3 and a half million to close to 12 million dollars. I don't think anybody knows what the amount is, but the accounting side of me says, okay, with any type of account receivable, you're going to have a percentage right underneath that says account for uncollectibles. And that's a question I've asked several times and never really gotten an answer. And I know there's going to be a lot of situations where we're not going to collect that amount. Specifically, if you've got a tenant, especially a renter, not necessarily a homeowner, but a tenant who is six months behind on used water but uncollected and they move out and move to another state, you're not going to collect that money. And it, it's gone and you can't go back and bill the owner for it, he didn't use the water. Same way with some of the homeowners, if they up and sell their house and move somewhere else, good luck collecting that. Again, I've heard no estimates on what amount that potentially could be. But I think the amount is going to be significant regardless of the total question mark of how much is out there that's uncollected. As far as Councilman Owen's suggestion that we just forget about it, there is some appeal to that, but you don't really, you may not bill it, not collect it, but you've got a budget in place for water usage and, and going forward, and it's just going to cause the rates to go up more eventually. That money is, and that cost isn't going away. I think in Ray Fellows' report, they mentioned that particular option and called it some type of actuarial loss. But it's, again, it's going to be collected in future billings. And I think Councilman Campcar talked a little bit about that too, if there's any estimate of what that actual uncollectible amount is going to be. Another concern, and, and I think Councilman Owens and Councilman Orlando touched on this, was the, the accuracy of the meters. I've got quite a few neighbors that come up to me and say, how has my water bill doubled? Even myself, you know, I've got a wife that's very angry that I'm on city council and our water bill in some cases has tripled from what it was a year ago. How two people and one that kind of goes and comes can use 40,000 gallons of water in one month is beyond me. And, you know, I've got one neighbor who used 60,000 gallons of water and, you know, all I can tell him is, you know, call the water utility billing company, I can't do anything about it. I can tell you what all the experts are saying, but that doesn't appease him. Again, those are kind of my comments, no questions really. Again, going back to that range between 3 and a half and 12 million, I don't really know what to believe. And.
Yeah, I'm going to.
That's pretty much what I have. I'll, I'll yield to Councilman Perez.
Yeah, I would just say, look, let's, let's, we have a path, let's follow the path. You know, let's, this is an extraordinarily complex system that has, like any extraordinarily complex system, has multiple points of potential failure. And when you're dealing with something like that, you want to deal with it one at a time to eliminate the, the sources of failure. And when you identify them, you solve that point in and of itself. To borrow the phrase that Ms. Ferguson used, we wouldn't be talking about a magic bullet, we'd be, or a silver bullet, we'd be talking about a silver buckshot that could hit everything all at once. There's just, it's just an impossibility. And we can bloviate about the past and we can talk about, well, what about this and what about that? We don't know. Experts who do this for a living don't know. What they can tell us is that let's process this effectively and see what we can do to generate solutions, a problem at a time. What we do know is that we had significant issues fall on one department or multiple departments that feed to one function of the city that failed generally at the same time, along with other projects that we were doing. You know, it, to, to over, to borrow an overused phrase, it was a perfect storm. It was a lot of things that failed at the same time or a lot of unique complications to this particular issue. To borrow from my profession, that's generally what I do for a living, is you take complex issues and you solve them a bite at a time until you get everything resolved. It won't happen in a day and it won't happen in a year and it won't happen probably in two years when everything is resolved to everybody's satisfaction. We've got to stay on the path. Right now, we have, as a council, decided that we've already explored, do we forgive this? We've opined on that already. It is my opinion now that since it's been brought up and we've decided that we want, we've ordered the Reftellus report and told them, approach it at a clean slate and give us your recommendations. Then we've subsequently appointed an ad hoc committee to say, review this report and review this, the, the staff's recommendations and give us our recommendations. Let's let the recommendations come in before we start bloviating about what we think we should have done. We've been talking about this for well over a year. The problems persist, but they're still being resolved, in my opinion. They're just taking, it's just a slow process. To Member Carbon's point, yeah, I, I appreciate garbage in, garbage out. The only way you know if you're getting garbage in is if you measure whether, what you're getting from one source is being read accurately. So, if it is garbage in, garbage out, then, okay, I know I'm getting garbage out, now let's go, go see if I'm getting garbage in. We've eliminated a source of the problem, that's progress. The likelihood that we purchased 40,000 meters and they're all screwed up, probably not likely. Do we really want to spend a whole lot of time and money exploring that? Essentially, just this, that issue that's just this side of a conspiracy theory? Look, if that's what we do as, will as a council, that's fine, there's going to be a cost to it. But if we want to do that, that's fine. But let's, let's let us progress with the problems that we know exist and then we can move on to the problems that we think exist. But scrambling everything into one big omelet and thinking that we're going to unscramble the egg and put it back in the shell is just not, it's just not a possibility. So let's just deal with what we have, stay on course, allow our citizens to give us their opinions. Once we have that, then we can start really talking about what we want to do. But every time we talk about this, we still, we begin to regurgitate things that we've said in the past and talk about issues that we've already opined upon, matters that we've already probably put to a close. You know, let's just, again, let's just let this progress. And I, I promise the citizens that we're going to do everything that we can to address this, but we, that doesn't mean that we can do it all at once.
Mayor Protem Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to, I guess, offer that I'd like to really keep focused on the ad hoc committee and what their task is, try to get some impact expectations because they are our customers and how that relates to our policy options that are on the table and in the Reftellus report. So I appreciate those options being there for our consideration. Also, I think just the general tone of the discussion to kind of add to Member Perez's statements, I think we're focused on outliers. And I think in a system as complex as this, those outliers are always going to exist. I, I think that we need to be focused on the, the progress, yes, that we're making that's in front of us and moving forward with the best case scenario. With that in mind, I would like to move forward with the policy shift, once the AMI is complete and up and running and we can see where we are in the 3230 plan at that point. And as those accruals change, that amount is going to change. We can get a better idea of what that is once AMI is up. And then reading the most recent UB update, moving forward, I think you said on February 15th, we've got some, some of the Itron modules or something have been backwarded and we've had to deal with Itron to get those modules for part of the AMI system to be up and running. So it sounds like we're moving in the right direction with the infrastructure, but it seems there have been some setbacks, not necessarily the fault of the city. But can, can, can I get staff to give us a revised timeline and what that AMI is going to be to get it up and running so we can start taking a harder look at these considerations in front of us?
If, through the mayor, yes, as you point out in our very detailed weekly updates we shared, the entire council's gotten, we showed that progress on the infrastructure for the, of the reeds, the, the meters, as has been said, have been completed and the changeout of those. And now we're not patiently waiting the infrastructure for the, the poles and the wireless devices that will read those. And so, the last estimate, Trent, I would say, it's going to be a process and, and we want to do that right. As the mayor said, we're going to do some small groups and so that'll be coming out, you know, as soon as the construction is done. And, you know, we're, we're still looking at this later this spring to be able to start to the first groups of those.
Okay, so I, I guess my, my thinking is, I would like to put the focus on the policy shift and align that with us bringing AMI along. It sounds like AMI is going to give us a lot of capabilities that we currently don't have to ensure that these issues don't creep back up in the future. Would our Reftellus consultants concur with that statement? I'm seeing shaking heads, okay, I'll take that as a yes.
Yeah, it's going to give us some information a lot faster, yes.
Okay, fantastic. All right, so to go back kind of to some of the, the statements also about having maybe our ad hoc committee look into testing meters that are coming up, I think, you know, those are really standard SOPs, I think I've seen in the UB updates that we're kind of already moving in that direction. And I will say also, I did review the solid state meter literature as, as opposed to the mechanical meter literature. And I think that if anything, if we were to add anything to the scope of this committee, it could even be maybe possibly a rate analysis, because it looks like the literature that I've reviewed, that there is a 20% increase in accuracy, which would then translate directly to a 20% increase in, in build consumption that is seen across some of these changeouts from mechanical to solid state meters. So that's not abnormal. I think we need to set that expectation and just kind of get that forward. But I just don't want the committee to lose focus. I think, again, to reiterate, I think the infrastructure is moving in the right direction. Once we get AMI up, we can focus on that policy shift because that really seems like the main focal point that's on the table before council. That is our job to come up with that policy. I would like to focus on that once we get that hard timeline of when AMI is going to be up and running. That's really all I have, Mayor, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Mayor, Mayor Protem Hernandez, briefly, you said the right thing about setting expectations. The reality of the situation is this, we shouldn't have done new software, new meters, new billing, all at the same time. And then, don't forget the gigantic elephant in the room, we're doing a quarter billion dollars plus of infrastructure, which is pushing rates up. And I think if we're going to start discussing expectations, the people think these water bills are high because there's some conspiracy theory that the, the meters are completely screwed up and that they don't work. And the, the team here has told us that the amounts that they are calculating are coming up for the most part correct, 98.5%. But the, the idea that we're going back to a $27 water bill, those days are not probably happening. We're doing too much infrastructure to prepare for the 2030s, 2040s and 2050s, that these water bills are now disproportionately high because we do not have enough users to get the rate at a more reasonable amount. And so, the amount per, per gallon is up. When we have 180,000 people here in Pearland, those rates will start to moderate because the amounts to do the bondholders will be different. Unfortunately, we have not talked about the fact that we're doing a quarter billion.
I'm not sure what happened to Councilmember Campcar's.
Councilmember Campcar, your audio dropped out.
Well, I, I can't, I can't hear Member Campcar, but I will, I guess, speak to it. There he is.
You were cutting in and out.
I was on a good little riff there, can you hear me now?
Yes. Member Campcar, if I, if I could just kind of add to that, because you're still cutting in and out, I do think that is a very astute observation. We are moving towards more water independence and water being our most valuable natural resource, I think, in the future. And Mayor Cole, I, I think you and I have spoken about this a couple, couple of years ago, as you may not remember, but that was one of the things that really fascinated me about just the movement of the city. And, and Mayor Reed, Mayor Emeritus Reed was here earlier and that was something that he and I spoke about as well, is setting up Pearland for that water independence moving forward, making us less reliant upon other sources, other municipalities. And that hopefully in the future, you know, and I know it's, it's difficult to talk 10, 20 years in the future, but in that future vision that was brought to us and hopefully, you know, we're making good progress in getting that surface water treatment plan online soon, we will actually be in very good shape compared to some of our municipal neighbors. So I think, you know, that, it is correct, we need to set that expectation and show people what we are delivering to them. And I think that we're, we're making great strides in a lot of departments. And yes, this, there are a lot of things that happen, but let's not focus on those outliers, let's not focus on the past, let's focus on the progress that we have. Thank you.
Yeah, good comments. And we're going to move forward in our agenda, everybody had a chance to weigh in on this. Obviously, Raph Tillis will be a. a chance to weigh in on this. Obviously, Raptalis will be around for some additional comments and questions as we move forward with the, with the ad hoc committee. I do want to thank Seth and Michelle for their time tonight and, and their opportunity to, to weigh in on this. You guys, we look to you guys to, to be the outside eyes and, and come in and, and help us, you know, all the way throughout our entire system where we need help, to, to show us that. And you guys have done that. The other thing I do want to say is, at the end of the day, customers across our city believe that trust has been broken. Not every customer, but a lot of customers. And we've all heard it. We've all heard it. If you've been on council for the last year, certainly those of us who've been running campaigns for the last year have, have heard it as well. So, and, and trust is a, is a valuable, valuable thing. And once it's broken, it's very difficult to get back. And part of this whole process, and I, and I agree with Councilmember Perez that, that we have a process, we've outlined a process in this, and we are now putting the, the customer in the middle of the process with this ad hoc group. And so it's been something over the last six, eight, nine months that, that just really hasn't been in the forefront as the city's been trying to get their arms around it. And so with that, we've got this citizens group that's going to help shape and move that forward. But another key component in building the trust back is telling the citizens the successes that are moving forward. And there are, there have been some, but also telling the story of, of everything that potentially has gone wrong. Like, when you change out a software system in and of itself creates problems, changing out meters in and of itself creates problems. Obviously, this was exacerbated with the 28-day meter read and the billing lag. So all of that put together has its own set of problems. Unfortunately for us, it all happened sequentially, and these problems end up stacking on top of each other. And that's where we are today. With that, part of this is communicating and, and letting our residents know, you know, what is happening. And so I think Josh and his crew in communications are looking and will be coming shortly in the next month or so with some supplemental on what we're doing and putting a campaign out there to help answer questions, provide the right feedback and, and, and help set the tone for the city, you know, going to the residents and, and letting them know what's happening with the billing process. Obviously, more to come in the days to come. This has been a good exercise tonight. Again, Seth and Michelle, thank you for your time tonight and, and the work that you've done over the last several months. It's been invaluable. It's been good work to, to share and show us where we are. I also have had some opportunity to meet with both of them online individually. And, and just the fact that they deal with 1,200 different utilities across the country, they've got the expertise. And I'm also hearing that we're not the only city out there that have some of the issues that, that they have shared with us. It, it, it's kind of indicative of especially people changing to the AMI systems, that there's just issues that happen. And so we've got a lot of work in front of us. We have a lot of work to do. Our staff, the citizens group, council, we have some, no doubt, some arm wrestling in the future with 3230. And we'll figure that out. That is our, our charge. And, and as, as this council to our citizens, we will make this right and get it right. We have no choice but to do it and get it right. So I think we all agree that whatever that looks like in the end, that's where we're all focused. So with that, I'm going to move on to item number two, discussion input. Councilmember Carbone, would you place that on the table?
Thank you, Mayor. And discussion input on modifying the joint public hearing special meeting format. So move, or?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you, Mayor. This is a discussion item that won't, won't be actions requested, but we floated in December with COVID as a backdrop of idea for how we structure and format our joint public hearings and how you process those. I'm, I know and participated in some of the work that we did with CUPs and, and public hearings, but I think there's an opportunity to provide some deeper input by the, your planning and zoning board members and, and separating them from the JPH. But the COVID backdrop would be, it's, it's a challenge, as you've experienced, to have that many people and to do that effectively at one time, virtually and some, some in person. And so as Mr. McDonald outlines, we, we suggest, if, if you're interested, trying to separate that. And this won't take extra time in the process, but it would separate those existing duties a little bit clearer and let the P and Z do their work and then bring the recommendation to the council and let you do your deciding actions. And you'd be free to have your discussions as well. I think it'd be a little bit easier wear and tear on some of the applicants too. So, you know, on nights where they have to come for that JPH, then stick around for the rest of the items and then perhaps wait for the P and Z sometime later that night too, while the rest of us are able to go home and P and Z is still here. So I think that's another benefit. But totally up to you. Just want some feedback if there's any interest in pursuing that. And Mr. McDonald, I don't know if anything you want to clarify before I go too far there?
Did John have a presentation?
No, I think you covered it also.
I'm sorry?
I think you've covered it, so.
Yeah, so we didn't have a presentation per se, Mayor. That's right. So, yeah.
Just making sure. Open it up for discussion and input.
Yeah, I, I would just say, I think the main benefit of doing it the way we've been doing it is that we, you know, we've selected a diverse group of people on the planning and zoning committee with diverse perspectives to, and we get to hear what they have to say. So I, I think this might make sense, but just, I, I would, I think so long as what they did say and what their reason was for approving or denying something was kind of shared with us or distilled with us in, in some way, that would be helpful.
Yeah, that, that's tough. I mean, a lot of times when we get the, the write-up on the first read, it's, it was approved or it was denied in a vote. So, yeah, I don't want to lose that piece, but if, if there's some way to communicate that, that we have their feedback during that first reading, I think that'd be helpful. But if not, I'm, I'm fine with the tweaks, since it doesn't slow down the process.
Councilmember?
Hey, I'm willing to try anything twice. Let's, let's go down this path and see if there's improvements. I think the only, the only thing I would, I was concerned with, and I brought this up to the city manager previously, I don't want us to slide back on the CUP process. The reason that we had the committee that addressed the CUP process was because there were, we were commonly getting people presenting the conditional use permits and they were, there was a, there were multiple barriers before they could get to a yes or a no just on the use. I do not want that to go back. I do not want them to have to feel it's a necessity for them to develop site plans and architectural renderings just to know whether or not the use would be approved. So if it's going to go to P and Z in advance of us, I'm fine with that. We do want P and Z's input. And I don't, if they feel like their, their voice is being watered down by the new, the new process, that's fine. But I want it to automatically come to us subsequent to their vote, or subsequent to their input, since they don't, they, they, they still won't be getting a vote.
You need more glass.
I apologize. So that's my only concern. Everything else, zoning, that's, that's driven by the state. We're going to have to do as many votes as, as we would based on the state process. The other things, I don't think that there's anything else that's negatively affected by this amendment to the process, as long as we don't slide backwards on conditional use permits.
It looks like Councilmember Cam Carr had a question, or he was reaching that way.
No, I'm, I'm waiting my turn, Mayor.
Oh, we're in, you're in line. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Well, um, I, I would say, I mean, for, for this tweak, I, I have a lot of faith in the, the members of the P and Z. I think that they're, they're doing a great job. I think they're, we have really professionalized that group. And we have a very dedicated group. I think the work with the community development department is giving good guidance and insight. My, my, my items, I would, I would say, if we're doing this, we probably need to have an honest discussion about what the, the current UDC is and where it needs to be revised to look forward the next five, 10, 15, 20 years, where we want to take the city. And then at that point, once we've amended that to something that we feel is, is what will help us, I think, let's let the P and Z mediate on that. I, I don't want to handhold. I don't want to marginalize those folks who are dedicating time to the city. Let's get their opinion and then we will judge thereafter. I, I think that they do a fine job. I would be open to this change, assuming we would look at the UDC to give them a clear guideline as we go forward.
Yeah, I would just reiterate, I had the opportunity to meet with, with John as well and just kind of walk through this process. And, and for me, I just don't want to slow down the process and make it more bureaucratic. But if it, if it gives us an opportunity to, in some cases, maybe even speed it up. If you're an applicant, you have a, you know, you have one date that you have to have your application in. And if you've missed it, you know, you, you, you're, you're out a month plus down the road. And it's one of the things that John, you know, shared with me was, as we get this up and rolling, there's more dates for applicants to be able to get in line. So in some ways, it may actually speed up for some people in the process. I absolutely agree with, with Councilmember Perez that on the CUP process, we don't want to, we don't want to roll that back. I think we've made significant process or progress in, in advancing our CUP process and making it quicker. I'm not going to say easier, but quicker. And, and I like what you've always said, you know, getting to a no should be quick and is less painful on the pocketbook as possible. But if it's a yes, then we have other work to do, you know, moving down the, the, the process. So I'd like to see this move forward as well. I don't know if Mr. McDonald or Mr. Pearson, you have enough to go by tonight on input?
So I think there's enough interest that we can do this. This does require a change to UDC because it's locked in. And I suggest that we make it flexible so we can go, you know, it's a council's prerogative on how you do this. Right now, we can't do this. So we need to change UDC to allow us to do that. But I suggest that we'll make it so that we can go back to the other way easily if you, if we don't like the way that that's going. So I think that flexibility element's key. Mayor, you mentioned about, I don't think anybody likes when, you know, there's, there's only one date and you miss that and then you're out of luck for another month. So I think this does give some more flexibility towards that with the meeting schedules and so forth. So.
Councilmember?
Any flexibility in the UDC is good, in my opinion.
Clearly. All right. Let's, hearing no other comment or, or anybody moving that direction, we'll move to item number three under new business. Councilmember Little, would you place that on the table?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action resolution number R 2021-18. So move.
Second.
Hernandez.
All right, we have a, a motion and competing seconds. I'll move to staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of flexibility, the Massey Oaks Development, residential development in the southeast part of our community is moving forward. This is intended to grant some requests of the developer as they've gotten deeper into this for some flexibility as they've fine tuned their engineering and so forth. We concur with the recommendation. Some of it's for financial guarantees and how they stack that and are obligated to provide that. City's still protected, so we're not giving up anything or putting ourselves at, at any extra risk. Some of the other things deal with utilities, as I alluded to. And this recognizes some of their engineering. And again, I think this is a win-win in terms of reducing their infrastructure costs and providing us, which will be responsible for down the road, in some fashion, some less lift stations and so forth, consolidating those. So I recommend your positive consideration of these.
All right. And we have two citizens that had signed up to speak to this. Hopefully, Josh, we have them online and ready to go. I have Mr. Peter Gishan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm here on behalf of Massey Oaks Development. Nothing further to add than what has just been mentioned. I just appreciate your and the council members and staff's continued support of the project. Thank you.
Okay, good. So you're there if we have any questions. And next citizen to be heard is Mr. Alan Mueller. And let me remind both of you, we, we need your name and address for the record. Sorry about that.
Alan Mueller, 4201 Broadway here in Pearland. Just to, I guess, touch on a couple of things that Mr. Pearson already, already touched on, you know, as, as we've, we've started, you know, design on several aspects of the offsite infrastructure as well as the onsite, you know, and with any project, you know, once you get deeper into the details, you start to uncover things that just, you know, couldn't be anticipated at the conceptual level. And, but we really do appreciate the, the collaboration that we've had with the staff. We, we have a weekly meeting set up now that's, that seems to be working really well. And I think we all agree on these amendments. And, you know, as we continue to unfold the onion as we go forward, you know, there probably are going to be other things that are going to need an amendment of one sort or another. And we'll try to keep those to a minimum. But I think the, the process that we have set up is, is working really well. And again, just appreciate your positive consideration and ready to answer questions.
All right, good. Thank you, Alan. With that, I'll move towards council. Do you have any questions or comments?
Mayor, I'd just note for the benefit of the citizenry that their consultant, Mr. Alan Mueller and I have occasionally done business, obviously not on this project, but I think it's fair for the citizens to know that we have that relationship before I vote.
Mayor, I just wanted to add that this is kind of a non sequitur to this item specifically, but I've had a lot of feedback recently, including from the applicant this evening, that our current planning staff, it's the best planning staff apparently that people have worked with in a very long time. And they've given a lot of compliments to staff's attitude as far as trying to make things work and not just saying no and trying to make projects move along, bring business and development to our city. So I, I just wanted to give a shout out to staff. I think that the feedback has been very positive. So let's keep up that, that good attitude of making things work and growing the city. Appreciate that.
Always good to get positive feedback. Anybody have anything? I don't see any, any movement towards questions. Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Little.
Aye.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Cam Carr.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021-18.
All right, thank you. We're moving. Councilmember Perez, would you put item number four on the table?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action resolution number R 221-1. So moved.
Second, Little.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a recommendation for a, a large amendment to the contract with our Dura group. There are designers working on the very complex, very large, very necessary expansion and upgrades to our wastewater plant located on Magnolia at the John Hart Grove Environmental Center. This is a case where we're, as part of that CEMAR process, this is a known next step, no surprises here with this. And this is actually going to be locking in and recognizing cost savings to the construction project eventually, but with this amendment to our Duras. So, you know, this is a part of the process, no, no big, no surprises at all. And again, this is, that CEMAR process has worked for us very well to deliver these projects in a efficient, effective manner. And these will be locked in with this amendment here. Nothing to add.
Thank you for that report. Any questions, comments from council?
I do, Mayor. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. The original budget was at a little less than 65 million. So we decided to bring in this CMAR, Construction Manager at Risk Expert. He comes back and with an updated estimate of close to $70 million. The purpose for hiring this person was to get things done quicker and save money. So he adds a little over $5 million to the budget, so much for saving money. So he adds a little over $5 million to the budget, so much for saving money. And then we come in and say, okay, we got to get back to that 65 million updated, original budget cost. But in order to do that, we've got to implement this value engineering to save the 5.3 million dollars. But in order to do that, we've got to go ask one through six and spend 3.6 million dollars to do that. So the net is 1.7 million dollar savings. Understanding this right?
So you, we need to back up quite a bit. I mean, when you do a project like this and years ahead of time, you know, you're going off of orders of magnitude and scope from projects and, and years ahead. So that 65 million, you know, was the estimate at the time for budgeting purposes and a fair estimate. But, you know, through the, through the process and what's necessary to pull this off, it's a, you know, it, it could have been a $70 million project. There's no doubt about that. And so, you know, just whether it's 65 million or, or anything, you know, whether it's 80 million, we still do the same thing to, to go through and try to find the savings with the contractor and the designer. So we still get a long-term quality project investment. So I wouldn't get personally too locked into that 65. It is, that's, that was when we developed this, probably, you know, three, if not more years ago. And this is what the project is. So Trent and Robert, maybe you can amplify that.
City Manager Pearson, this is Member Cam Carr, just a moment. How do you VE 5.3 million dollars out of a project? That's just seems like an inordinately large amount. And I kind of agree with Member Little. This person was there to find savings and then they found the cost bus and we've now magically VEing out, you know, almost sort of like about eight percent of the project. It just, I'm, as somebody who's a development professional, I find that hard to believe. So I'm kind of seconding where Member Little's coming from.
If I can walk us a little bit through the C Mar process, we start the process with, with the design engineers. They come on board. They, they start the design. At about the 30% design, we bring on the construction manager at risk. And that's the firm that brings their, their construction expertise to the table. So that, that increase from our early estimates before we even started the process to the first estimate where it went up to about 70 million was the construction manager actually pricing up the design as it was being developed. And that's part of the construction manager at risk process is get, is to get that early input.
Mr. Pearson, if we didn't have the TWB approval, what would have happened to this $5 million?
The TWB is just a financing mechanism.
That would come from the Texas Water Development Board, correct?
I'm sorry?
This, this amount that we're, we're getting, this $5 million, all of this money is Texas Water Development Board money, correct? This is an actual money that we have in the bank account, correct?
It's just a financing mechanism. Whether we go out to the market and borrow or whether we go through TWDB, that's, it's the Bank of TWDB. So.
Okay. So, so in theory, if we didn't have the Bank of TWDB and it was just our money, we would just be losing this $5 million, correct?
No, I mean, that wouldn't, that's immaterial for this.
Oh, I, I mean, $5 million seems material to me.
No, I'm not talking about the 5 million. I'm talking about the weather, where, how you finance it.
I just, I'm going to, I'm going to kind of stand with Mr. Wood on this. It just, it seems like we're.
Well.
If I can kind of finish the C Mar process. So at that point, you get your first estimates and the purpose of that is to see where you are. See if you need to work on what, what's being designed, some of the scope, some of the way that things are being done. And that's the way this process went. We had the, at that point, the, the construction manager is able to have input on what you're building, how you're building it. They were able to have some input on the way we're do, we were doing some of our foundations, which is a major cost in a project of this size. And in the end, we're able to affect where we are today by about that $5 million. The actual scope of this contract here, there's only a little bit, maybe $300,000 in there that, that helps or is part of taking those changes and actually putting them into the design. The rest of the cost of this proposed amendment is to do the actual construction phase services for the project, which we would be doing no matter what. So that provides all the engineering, construction phase services as well as construction management and construction oversight from the engineering firm.
Other questions?
Well, as recently as January of night of 2020, we were starting this contract at the $65 million budget. And then we hired this CMAR, I guess, and just a few minutes prior to that with, with an objective of saving money and, and speeding up the process. So I'm still throwing it at how, you know, from the original budget, which when you put into these budgets, come up with these estimates, I'm sure you're doing that with engineers, telling you what it's going to cost. And they take into account the increases in cost of materials over time based on historical data.
Yes, sir. But you're doing that without a design at that point. And once you start the design and there's something for a contractor to actually cost up, that's when we get that early look at where we are with the construction estimate versus the budget. And then we, and then through the C Mar process, we can start working on, on that to reduce those costs as we finish the design. So that's, that's where the construction manager's expertise comes in to help you get from 30% design to 100% design, cost it along the way, and then bring the project in under, on budget.
Okay. So, so we're at 69 million, but we want to get it back to 65. In order to realize that 5.3 million dollar difference, we do all these revisions in value engineering. So how are we saving to 5.3 if we're now, I think the estimate, total estimate is at 73.7 million. I, I don't know.
That's the budget. The, the 70 and the 65 was construction only. So our current construction estimate looks like we're just under 65 million.
Okay. So we're, we think that our total estimate is going to be 65 million?
No. To construction only.
But am I right in that to save 5.3 million, we're going to spend 3.6 million?
No, sir. There's about 300 and something thousand dollars in this amendment that memorializes the design changes that we went through with the C Mar to save the $5 million. The rest of this contract is for your construction phase services that we would be doing an amendment for regardless of the changes to the design.
Task, task four, if on page two of the memo, that's the, the savings lock-in that was referenced. The rest of it would happen regardless.
We, we had, we had a C Mar contractor identify some cost savings. In order to implement those cost savings into the design, we have to spend 344,000, then to modify their drawings to get it back to the contractor, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the additional costs are for services that we already anticipated for this project.
Yes, sir.
What do we have approved? Now it looks like we had approved out of the Texas Water Board, 75 million. And we actually going to borrow 75 million on Texas Development Water Board?
They, they've approved us for 75 million and our current expenditure estimates right now are about 73.7 million.
Okay. So we've actually, we've paid some money upfront so far, you know, on the engineering that we've, we've paid out of our enterprise system. Right?
Yes, we have an existing engineering contract that we've paid for services rendered to this point.
And, okay. Only one other question after going through and reviewing, what, what's the FFNE or 500,000 dollars? That's projected in there in your budget?
Sorry. I don't have all the details in front of me, but I know that's to outfit the, you know, there will be an onsite lab. It'll, there will be some space for staff. And then we, it's to outfit those areas.
That's, it just seemed like a lot of money for FFNE for.
Well, that, that's a budget number. So, you know, it's, it's, we'll, we'll spend what's necessary.
I could see that building a facility, you know, where public works or wherever, traffic or anything.
It also includes our IT cost and some of the technology costs to go in there so that we're connected to our network and have all the normal IT and network functions we have in all of our other facilities.
Okay. I was just wondering, it's a little bit high number. So I was just wondering what it was going to be used for. Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
Questions? What is the, the ultimate plan on this is 73.5 million? That, those bonds or that, that loan has already been authorized to be upsized to that number, correct?
No, the, the, as it shows in that funding sources, we've issued about 6 million from different sources.
Question I, I had, the, the total estimated project cost currently stands at 73.5 million. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So how do we get from 64 to 75? At some point, somebody had to go to the TWBD and say, we want 64 million. And now we're, we're more or less adding 12 million or roughly speaking, round numbers, 20% more project. Can somebody just, and I know this is a different contract, but just tell me how we, we, we change the scope 20%?
I don't know if the scope has been changed 20%. So we've gone through the design.
Changed 20. If the scope hasn't been changed 20%, then why are you asking for 75 million dollars?
So we know we're going to be spending because of what we've done with the C Mar and everything else, that this project's going to come in and be eligible for that kind of funding. So when we go to TWDB to finalize it, that's what we'll do.
So.
So what, what did we get 12 million dollars more for? I guess is my question.
So to go through the TWDB process, it takes, you know, years to make the request, get on, you know, have your projects on the plan and, and get in line for funding. So at the time when that was originally applied for, we were at 64 million dollars on our project estimate.
Okay. So.
What the project to build that 2 million gallon expansion is going to be is the, is the 75.
Mr. Efferson, real quick.
Yes.
Mr. Cam Carr, hang on one sec, one sec. I just, I want to make a clarifying question on, on, Mr. Efferson, when you said we went to the T, Texas Water Development Board and got in line for all of that at, at whatever that, what, what was that just for construction? Or was that total project budget?
I believe that was total project budget and looks like that was based on the, the, the project at the time. We've got, I mean, that, that's based on when you're at preliminary engineering. We've gone through wastewater modeling. We've gone through looking at what we need for this project. We've gone through the change in the annexation laws, which, which affected the, the size of this expansion that we planned for. And then we were just using the best, you know, best cost estimates we had at the time. Looks like we originally submitted our form in March of 2017 to TWDB. And so, you know, the, these types of projects have probably seen more inflation than other types of projects from, from the information we've seen over the last, you know, few years. So it's, you know, so you make that initial request, you get in line, you approve that amount. We came back to council when we went back to, I believe we came back to council when we had to go back to TWDB to resubmit for the 75 million, which was just recently approved.
Sorry, Mr. Camper. I just wanted to clarify what number we were talking about.
And, and here's the, I'm not, I'm not trying to bang on somebody. If somebody can tell me articulately where we're getting 20% more scope. Nobody has done that today. Under the current status in the green on this template, I don't know if they can roll that on the screen. It's the third, sorry, the fifth page on the memo. I want to read the quote. "The schedule for loan closing is set for February. The total loan funding request can be adjusted down at any time before loan closing based on more accurate pricing after the GMP is received and accepted in bold print. The current approved FY 21 CIP budget has been revised to account for all current costs anticipated for cost construction and the current wastewater rates account for the cost." So this is what people ask, why your water costs so much? Here we go. Increasing the authorized loan amount to 75 million will allow the city to benefit from historically low interest rates versus supplementing with higher interest rate revenue bonds. So I guess I just don't know where we're getting 20% more.
Trent, what's the average contingency at, at preliminary engineering? About 20%?
Yes, sir. At 20%, I'd say a minimum at, at, you know, preliminary engineering and prior to preliminary engineering, when you're just in the planning phase on a project like this.
Yeah. I, I can say that I've been involved in a number of municipal, municipally funded projects where you're just going off of estimates and sketches and there's a lot of incomplete data and, you know, 20% adjustment in scope is not unusual. There's a lot of, a lot to be unknown. We haven't heard from TWB, TWDB, any concerns about any of the data that we've sent to them?
No, sir.
And they, they require, they, they audit this pretty, pretty stringently, correct? They don't just hand the money out?
They require us to basically submit everything we're going to build through them.
Okay. I appreciate the concern. I would say that, you know, in having, I mean, be involved in this project, seeing projects increase from preliminary engineering to 90% and values 20% or greater is not wholly unusual. It's hard to be that predictive. To remember, remember Little's concern about the engineering cost estimates. You know, I, I price a lot of things. I, I can't tell you what the market's doing. You know, I, I, we designed a school. That school came in $10 million over budget. We designed another school and it came in $20 million under budget. It's just the flexibility of market depends on the contractors, how hungry they are. There's a lot that, that feeds into it. Sometimes it can be something as simple as a, a, a new tariff in a new industry that makes steel jump up in price by 20 or 30%. I mean, it's just, it's hard to be predictive, particularly when you're more than six months out. When you're years out, it's impossible. So, I mean, I think they're great questions to ask. I mean, certainly we need, we need to be able to offer the citizens some explanation as to how we determine budgets and how do we end up in final budgets. But I don't find what we're seeing here to be outside the norm.
I guess just to make sure I'm understanding, we, we started the process thinking it's to be a 65 million dollar project three years ago. And as we move towards 100% engineered plans and engaging the, the CMAR process that actually gets estimates, we're coming in at 75 versus 65. I guess in total, is that?
Is that a good nutshell analysis? Is that what?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I think that's a good nutshell.
When this project, when is this project scheduled to be completed?
October 23 construction completions, what it's showing.
Sorry, when?
October 23 was the baseline as before C Mars. So.
So we shouldn't be shocked if a year and a half now, they come back with another increase because they didn't anticipate.
That's the benefit of the C Mar is that you're, no.
We'll have a, we'll have a guaranteed maximum price before you very soon. I think it's covered in the memo.
The, the memo says construction starts.
Yeah, we'll actually have the GMP within, within the next few days, next few weeks. And we'll have that back in front of the council, I think about April. So that'll lock in our costs based on the C Mar actually taking the project out to the market and getting the final bids and final numbers.
I think one of the, I think one of the concerns and I, I want to, I want to, I, I think the questions that Councilmember Cam Carr is raising are, are valid questions and concerns. I mean, when, when we have a, a water bill and rates and doing what they're doing, you know, those rates taking into consideration all of this plant costs that we're, you know, in the, in the middle of building right now, this one as well as the water plant. And so I think it's, I think it's important, you know, one of the questions and concerns that I always have, and I'm not an engineer, I'm not, I don't, I don't build plants every day. I rely on people who do this. And, and I just want to make sure, you know, and I'm going to use the word gold plating. I just want to make sure that engineers aren't coming in and necessarily gold plating a, a, a design to this. I, I get it. It's going to have. in and necessarily gold plating a, a, a design to this. I, I get it. It's going to have to meet certain standards in the state. It's, it's got to meet certain things. I just want to make sure that, that we're getting exactly what we're, what we need, not necessarily above and beyond. And, and I don't know if I've stated that the right way, but I, I want to make sure that it's, obviously it has to meet TCU standards. It has to meet, you know, all those kinds of things. But I just want to make sure we're not, the engineers aren't going above and beyond, you know, what's necessary.
No, sir. We, you know, the, the engineers work for us. So we work with them throughout the process to make sure, you know, we're meeting the needs to, to maintain and operate the plant efficiently. But, you know, we're not doing things that go above and beyond what the, the requirements, the, the TCU requirements are.
Any other comments or questions?
This is from what I read in there and, and Trent, you understand it probably better than I do, but some of these are to lock in some of the long lead items to get them at the value of what they are now. Just to be able to do that, that would allow them to, to lock in some items in there and, and this month in February, to be able to do that.
Yeah, I, I don't mean to come across so wrong way. I know you guys are doing your job and you're trying to save the city money. I'm just trying to understand how these costs go from 65 million to seven, close to 74 million in light of what the city's been through with the water billing and the citizens that are watching this going, great, you know, another $8 million added to our future water bills here. So that, that's the, the reason behind my questioning this is, is basically for understanding.
And remember a little, as, as you've seen a lot of these and been up there for a while, I mean, you also know there's plenty of projects. This is, it is, I'll say it is what it is, but this one, you know, the, the three-year ago estimate came in low, the surface water plants, tens of millions below. So, you know, they, on the whole, I bet, you know, we're more conservative in terms of the estimating and the budgeting. So.
It is. But bear in mind, it's, it's a significant project because we have to close down the Longwood Station. And I mean, when we talk about fiscal responsibility, TCU requires that we have a project in design and construction once we hit certain metrics with the, with, with respect to the capacity that we are using. If we, if we don't meet those, and there's a number of communities that fall in this trap because they, they cut budget or they don't get ahead, ahead of things, we're, you're talking about fines in the hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars. That's, that's nothing that we can recover back. I mean, if you, if you start reporting to TCU that we're over 90% on our capacity at our water plants and they're not, we're not in construction, we get a, we get a big fine.
City Manager Pearson, this is member Cam Carr. Can you just put on the list of items going out of this that we have a, a breakdown of what the VE items that made up the 5.3 are? And can that be sent at a later date?
Yeah. If, if you wanted some overview now, or we can go back, we can send it out to you. We're happy to.
You can just send it out tomorrow. It'll be fun.
Good deal. Seeing no other comments, Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr? I'm sorry, Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Read his lips.
Read his lips, aye.
Can you please repeat that, Mr.?
Oh, he said no. Thumbs down.
Okay.
Thumbs down. No. Thank you.
Hernandez?
Aye.
And Member Little?
Aye.
The motion carries six to one to adopt resolution number R 2021 dash one.
All right. Moving forward in our agenda, new business item number five. Where'd I leave off? Councilmember Perez? Or no, Councilmember Owens. Place that on the table.
Okay. Number five, consideration possible action resolution number R 2021 dash 10 is so moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thanks, sir. Third time's a charm. You followed and we've been working on trying to package various road improvement projects, traffic signal projects. We rejected some when they didn't come back near what we thought. And so with this, this attempt, we've packaged together not only Pearland Parkway, but some Dixie Farm work and Windward Bay on Broadway. And so all told, you know, the, these, the, the construction costs, we got competitive pricing back and gets it back to where we had estimated and are comfortable recommending for your consideration and move approval. Nothing to add, sir.
Thank you for that. Moving to council comments and questions.
I just got one quick comment on that. I was not a big fan of the roundabout in the beginning on this. And then I come to find out now the monuments may be tore down and everything. But I guess run the concern that I have from the police department, how many wrecks have we had since we built that roundabout in that area that happened there? Is there any way we can track that down of how many wrecks has actually happened in that roundabout area?
Yes, sir. We can definitely get that information for you. Let's take a little bit to track it down, location.
Yeah. Personally, I don't remember any of them, but you know, there's things happen at night, everything else. But I would just wondered, you know, and it says on there, but, you know, we used to get so many calls about Pearland Parkway and, and how beautiful it was and the roundabout and trees and everything else. And then not having any outside storage at, or at Lowe's, but if you go by Lowe's right now, it's probably 10 foot tall and outside storage all the way around. And, and it's not supposed to be there. But anyway, if we could find that, you know, I'd like to find out just how many wrecks that have occurred there. I know that, you know, in this area, the number two location is Pearland Parkway and, and 518. And then number one is on the west side of town at 288 over there. But, but I'd just like to find out how many wrecks that we had there at the roundabout.
Do you have a time period on those wrecks? Like forever or the last year? Since we built it? Okay. Just asking. Yeah. It was built in like '04, '05, somewhere in that ballpark. Okay. Any other questions or comments? I think Mr. Cam Carr's got one. There you go. Okay.
Yes, sir. Can I get a description of what the intersection improvements are at Windward Bay?
Intersection improvements, what? I'm sorry?
At Windward Bay.
At Windward Bay?
Windward Bay.
Sure. It's at Windward Bay and Broadway and includes a traffic signal and an extension of the turn lanes and then all the signage and pavement markings that goes along with that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R 2021 dash 10.
All right. Moving to our last item from the agenda, item number six, Councilmember Orlando, would you take that one?
Sure, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution number R 2021 dash four. So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thanks, sir. This is a best value bid for the city. Put it out and recommending going with NAPCO for the package of, of chemicals, not only chemicals, but also services that we get from them as, as part of that process. And we've had a good experience with them and prices overall, we believe, and, and the value is best for the city, going with them for this new contract period for the year upcoming. So nothing to add.
All right. Thanks for the staff report. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, moving in that direction. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Cam, Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr? Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number 2020, R 2021 dash four.
All right. Thank you, guys. Item number eight, mayor council issues. There are nine, nine other business. There's none. We'll move to number 10, adjournment at 8:57. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening.